The meeting is yours.
Yeah, there's some great stuff that they've been doing. Towards the spring, we did have our fourth and fifth grade students that were coding the Tera robots. We did get the grant from the Polar Bear Foundation that allowed us to double the number of robots that we had in the spring, which was much appreciated. And some very interesting thing, if you remember them doing the, I think we had them there where they showed us the parade and the parade route that they had to code. So yeah, quite a lot with block language using code.org and some others. So yeah, they are getting into a good fit at elementary. Yeah, so just wanted to kind of give an update for the board in terms of numbers. We'll do an actual hard number sheet next week. We've been tracking that. I know there's been some questions about where are we with registration for NOLA, our online virtual academy? We were student enrollment. All in all, our building homes have not seen a huge drop off. We have seen this slight increase in families going down the homeschool route. We're at about 40 over normal school year. And a good number of them are kindergarten, although there are other families in other grade levels that are considering that as an option for their families. NOLA certainly has changed some things. We're at the mid 50s at the middle school, which is an uptick. We typically are around 10 to 15. We're at about 79 at the high school, which is just about 10 over where we were last year at this point. Obviously, our program at elementary is brand new. We're at 149 interested families, about 178 meetings with different families with elementary to kind of talk about this choice and whether or not it makes sense for families. So our principals have been doing that a fair bit. We have Amelia Perry, a counselor that's been meeting with our families pretty much now for the start of school. There are meetings every day, pretty much all day long, with families interested in this as an option. So that's kind of where things are right now. A secondary question off of that, cabinet talked about this with leadership earlier today, was with those numbers and where we are, are we at a point where staffing of our online program is becoming a requirement of us? So as we're looking at that, we're watching the numbers. One of the challenges we have in neighborhood elementary schools is we have between three, the highest number of 12 students at any one building at any one grade level. So it's not enough at this point where we would not need a classroom teacher in the physical face-to-face model. So we've got something within the personnel committee this evening, we'll be talking about potential long-term subs that will have to provide lead coverage for us to have a teacher actually overseeing the online virtual program at elementary. So that's a discussion that we'll have a little bit later, but certainly our numbers are up slightly at secondary, but there's high interest at elementary. This is the first year we have, we don't have any other benchmarking compared to.
Any questions?
Yeah, great question. I'll just remind the board members, because I am listening online, just make sure you talk very loud with the mic, it should pick up. And I am glad, just a reminder to all the board members. The unfortunately, it took us to get those numbers until we actually have the withdrawals in our buildings. I was at the high school today, did ask that question and was told it has not been more than normal. They are moving to our NOLA program. We do have some families that have left us. Certainly at elementary, we've had some withdrawals to go to private charter schools. As of Monday, we had 12 families that have taken that choice. Yeah, absolutely. So items related to steps that we need to take for the state. Essentially, what we need to do in addition to our health and safety plan, we need to provide an amendment. There is, there was an attachment that was included at the end of the board that we have to specify to the state, how are we covering 180 hours, I mean 180 days, and the 900 elementary hours required under state code and 990 hours that are required at secondary level. So we need to provide copies of our face-to-face, our blended schedule, as well as our virtual schedule when we move to remote, if we move to remote, and be able to quantify the amount of instructional time that we have.
So it's important, because I think as we go from spring and our experience under County Education Plan and transition to what we're looking at with remote distance learning and fall, the instructional component is far more intense in our plan for the fall, because we need to be able to show five to five and a half hours of daily instruction for kids, five days a week, for 180 days through the school year. So the recommendation from the state, or actually our requirement from the state, is we require board action to take steps that would not necessarily require kids in seats in our buildings, as long as we are able to quantify that we're meeting the 900 hours and the 990 hours at secondary. So that's what's before the board is just really an action that would allow the administration to send our proposal to the state, so we are granted that leeway and not have an impact on state subsidy and any other requirements we have. So, thank you.
Yeah, so that's a load. So certainly, for those of you that are parents in the district, we've been trying to do almost every other case to our families about our planning. We did have a Q and A session with our middle school parents last week. We have one plan for the high school. We have been having our ninth grade transition program, so we've been having groups of 25 students going to the high school. They are going and having tours with Mr. Lehman, Mr. Walker, and going through the high school, so we're trying to meet that transition need, just comfort level with building. We have been putting some stuff out, certainly as you saw this last week, about every couple of days, we get new guides, something's related from the state, something's released from DOH, and that's somewhat causes us to reevaluate our plans. So there are some changes, obviously, the mandate that came out here on Monday changed significantly, what we've been telling families, what we've been telling students with the face covering. So we're still processing through what all of that means and whether or not that means absolutely nothing to the face masks being required at all times in the building. We were planning on breaks, we were planning on the separation. I've had some email correspondence with the music department, for example, today, Mr. McCartney, Mrs. Yon on face coverings and instruments, and how can we continue to teach your curriculum, get some face covering. There are actually music face covering that allow all to be there, so you can still play an instrument, and we're also talking about instrument covers themselves that go over the end of horn or over the end of a clarinet to reduce potential exposure. So I got some quick education today in the products that are available to try to keep those programs in place. So just a little bit about where we are. We're going to continue doing some updates. Mr. Patrick can speak to the parent FAQ.
We have some stuff that is going to come out, but we're trying to balance getting out information, keeping it accurate, and also realizing that in a short amount of time, we tend to have to change very quickly. So I'll turn over to Mr. Patrick, and then Mr. Luda has a few things, and then we'll come full circle.
As far as the FAQ, it's like we're ready to go out to the community. That is our mechanism to refresh information. It didn't make as much sense to go back into our update and actually updating the update, whereas we feel like we provide these recurring questions we get from the community, frequently ask questions, and then we get new information. We also actually literally highlight the brand and put a new symbol next to them so that folks can check back frequently and see what the new information is. So, and then just as far as the fall reopen plan, I've been in all the buildings within the last few weeks, and they are, for the most part, set up and ready, you know, ready and waiting for our plan to be executed. So our building staff, our custodians, have done just a tremendous job getting things ready to the point where it's a matter of things rolling down at this point.
So there is a few things to kind of discuss just with the boards. Certainly, last week, early last week, the governor released some information about the closing of schools and the reopening of schools in some guidance. And it was very similar to the plan that we had, that we networked with other districts and had put in our community update as a draft form. Now it is then adopted by the state, at least as the approach they're going to take, using that low, moderate, and substantial risk, looking at the countywide data, looking at the percent of positive cases within the county. And if you go and you look at that model and you go to the state website, you'll see underneath that warning dashboard that we would be rated in the moderate, and then they corresponded that to an instructional model for opening. When you go and you go across that table, you will see that it indicates that blended model and full remote was the recommendation from the state. We did have an FAQ session, Q and A session with our elementary staff last Wednesday. We had another one with our secondary staff on Thursday. This was a question we were asked, so we'll just kind of come out with the board and say this is certainly then something there. When you look at the York County numbers, the numbers are rather high and have been for the last three weeks for the county. What we have focused on here, under the local control, and we're being charged by the state to make this decision at a local level and use the data that we have available to us, looking at our zip codes, recognizing that, you know, we've got people coming from other zip codes, but looking at what is in Northern York County School District, our cases are relatively low. When you're looking at, you know, as of last week, talking about eight cases in the Warrington Township, Wellsville Borough, when you look at the rest of the 17019 zip code, we were at 53 cases closing out last week. And so, and our thought process as, well, why the governor's recommendation for this plan of low, moderate, and substantial, why are we opening with a, you know, five days a week face-to-face model at elementary and sixth grade? That was a factor when we considered our current planning and why we've remained focused on the plan that we presented to the board last month. Certainly, lots of discussions around looking at that data, monitoring that data, you know, back seven days, back 14 days, and whether or not that would change our thinking moving forward. We have said continuously, this is a fluid process, and at any point, we can pivot to one of the other instructional models, but at this point in time, we are still focused on opening schools under our plan that was presented last month with the modifications that we need to do, so.
If I can just add, with that chart from the state, the recommendation is even if the numbers change and put you in a different row from either low, moderate, or substantial, the state is recommending that you give it another seven days before pivoting, because of how drastic the change it is when you change instructional models. So if someone sees the dashboard and notices, oh, look, we're in this now, the guidance is wait another seven days, and if it stays there, then they can move. So I just wanted to point that out.
So I'll kind of pause there for any questions from the board, and then we've got a few other updates related to our opening schools.
So the health and safety plan is fluid, and yes, you're exactly right, I was talking about that last night. I, we need to go into the parts where we talked about the things that were changed, update them, and bring them back to you and resubmit them. So yes, I don't have those for tonight, but yes.
That could be a month in fact.
It could be.
So then if something changes between board meetings, like we're going to approve whatever the governor or the secretary of health just told us this week, we'll approve it next week, and then when they tell us something different following, are we going to rush back and have a special meeting to work with before we open schools, or are we just going to update the plan and then vote on it? Because this is going to change every week, every year.
I think some of the changes are of a nature that if we're a little bit more general in our health and safety plan, which we have been, that every change is not going to be, needs to be reflected, a change in our plan. And I think it behooves us to go back to our plan as well and make sure that plan is general enough so that it's less likely we have to bring this back all the time.
For example, we have been there, follow the face covering order, but then we went into detail that said, which currently is six feet below, so probably don't need that extra detail in there right now for that specific document, because you're right, it's going to be covered.
It'd be easier just to omit it and allow us just to follow whatever the current state guidelines is.
Right.
Yeah, because I don't want us to, I mean, we're creating so much work for ourselves every time we change something, and so I think there's a difference between implementing it and then having to spend hundreds of hours to document and vote on it and everything. I just want to say I pull back your decision to vote on the numbers that we're not holding more than positive, but whatever's going on in Southern New York City, you know, we look hard, most of our township deals are numbers, they are, they're looking very good. And I applaud the guys who are taking the path track. I guess one question I would have is that your, our expectation is we're going to have cases correct. We're not going into this thinking that we're going to completely put a bubble around our community and not have cases correct.
Correct.
Whether it's a student, athlete, member, a parent, we're going to have cases, we know that.
It's mitigate, not eliminate, right? We're doing our best, but yeah.
So I think as long as we're all okay with that and realize that the practical aspect of this is that we're never going to have zero cases, so as long as everybody's on board with that, then one is better than two. So as long as we can be ready, as low as possible, zero would be great, but it's probably not.
And you recall in our plan, we do have a staggered approach to what would happen with a single case. We're required to notify Department of Health, we have to do the contact tracing, we have to do the notification to anyone who's coming close to physical proximity. So those things are required of us, but a singular case wouldn't lead to the closure of all of our schools. We have that tiered approach, and if we were to see those sorts of clusters in a building, multiple cases, we have that staggered approach of closing school for a few days to closing for two weeks to changing our instructional model. Unfortunately, we're trying to plan for all scenarios. And one other item to just bring to the board attention, I did want to make you aware. Certainly, our planning over the summer, looking at instruction, looking at the different things that we are trying to do, I appreciate the seven days that we're going to have here over the next couple of days. We've been working on scheduling out our teacher training and the topics that we want to make sure that they're comfortable with as we move into any one of these instructional models. A little bit on where we are with our prepping for the school year. Unfortunately, us and pretty much every other school district has put in orders for technology devices. We have a contingency plan in place for the high school. At this point in time, we are missing about 620 laptops that were ordered back in July. I know the 300 Chromebooks and about 120 iPads, none of which right now has a shipment date. We know that some of the stuff has shipped from overseas, but until we kind of hit the West Coast, we don't get any kind of ground transportation. So we anticipate right now, from talking to HP and one of our other HSI vendors that we work with to purchase equipment, that they're saying anticipate middle to end of September. So we're hoping that they're giving us a date that is down the road and they deliver sooner than that, but that will be a challenge of ours as we look at September 8 start date, whether or not we'll have devices available for every kid. If you recall, in our plan, we went one-to-one, grades six through 12 last year. We had purchased enough Chromebooks this summer to be able to go one-to-one, grades three through 12, with laptops or Chromebooks. And we also prioritize all of our iPads at the elementary level to our primary students in K-1, 2, which will get us very close to being one-to-one with iPads in grades one and two. We do not have enough devices for every single kid at elementary. But that is our current status where we are with planning and where things are with devices, and obviously, that's a huge one as we talk about the potential for remote learning. We're prioritizing the high school to talk a little bit. Sixth and ninth grade are the ones getting the new devices. At this point in time, sixth grade is coming five days a week, so we won't have their devices. The ninth grade is where we're trying to prioritize, because they'll be in the cohort A-B model with a hybrid plan, and three days will be at home. So we'll be pulling every available device to meet that need if these shipments don't come in in time.
Yeah, we have one facility use request there. There's good questions on that. Any more William Wills update?
No, other than the update, you know, I said a few weeks ago, the judge approved the order, or Michigan order approving the sale, so it's currently with the reorders and title search and that's on life and should be, should be done hopefully very soon.
That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll have to hold on to this stuff there.
Okay, this is present. First item that I pay is payment bills, and there's three different ones and checks there. Any questions on any of those? Letter B is the treasury report from Mr. Gilman, sent off to light status after the treasury report is sold. Letter C, various accounts, student activity accounts. Letter D, the personal tax exemptions, and letter E, our personal tax exemptions. Any questions on any of those? Letter F is to approve a mended contract for transportation with coffee and bus service.
Jason, I guess we're at the end of our contract, so we're just extending the contract with the management sheet right now.
Yeah, for the time being, that's pretty much what we're doing. We're also laying out some verbiage in terms of what this looks like in terms of, you know, reducing, getting reduced days, other things that would happen in terms of the production of things, things like that. So I've been managing for both our contractors, coffee and door, for the past probably two or three months, I've been working on this along with Frank Howser. You know, ultimately, they only survive. So it is a partnership that we have with them, and this really is needed for them to maintain their services. So it's, well, I'm extending the contract for one whole year, that's very good, and it's also addressing some concerns of AI going into a very broken, unknown school year. So usually, I think it works out for both of us going into the 21, 22 school year. I am looking probably for RFP, probably that this fall or early winter, get that out, and we'll do that process for next year. I'm not working this year. Yes, this is basically an extension to some.
I mean, high level, if you picture, are we, have we got more bus runs, same bus runs, plus bus runs overall?
Yeah, so overall, we're almost the same. We added a bus run for Gilbert Elementary School. Do you have any ideas you are willing to proceed? Secondary runs are basically the same. There may be a couple of base offerers runs to make sure that aren't over any one of those runs. Some of them are a full two-per seat, you know, like every kid. Most of those are two-per seat on the pool buses, and that's if every kid rides every day, which is not normally the case, not every student runs every day on school. Yeah, fortunately, we have enough buses that can be really only at one elementary run
Okay. Letter E is to approve the lease agreement with that refunding for a post-its machine at Northern Middle School. I assume we don't have a post-its with them now, we're adding that.
No, we do have one now, the lease is expiring via FHP, and I did not have a good knower of it with HP last time, and we're switching vendors.
Okay, letter I is to approve the lease agreement with JTF funding for a nine-month extension of the copy release.
Yeah, so that's another one that eventually we'd like to do, and I said HP on the post meter, and then Katie Boe, sorry, we were talking HP earlier, and HP, I'm going to Katie Boe, we're moving away from Katie Boe. The lease agreement for the copy, again, that's just an extension to get us through June 30, we have a very oddball date on the current lease in the middle of the school year, it is October 31st, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So I just extended that nine months to get to June 30. My plan is to do a full RFP for copier services for all of the school year as well. So two big RFPs coming here this year.
Okay, letter J is approve service agreement with live payment plus online payment systems for Horizon Software International. And I looked through the document, I didn't see any costs, I didn't really see a whole lot of any meat and potatoes, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, so we currently use Horizon for our group service online payment services. This actually is just adding an amendment to include that in some of the payments that the high school does for SATs, things like that, but they're getting payments in for certain services that we divide. There is no cost to the district, there's going to be a service charge when you're paying via credit cards for that, so to us, there's no cost. We do have Horizon software already, so I've had a lot of, I think we could do the same with them, so it's kind of just expanding upon services we already have for our students.
Okay, letter K is approve the donation of a Bundy tenor saxophone with a case with a value of $1,100. Letter L is approve the engagement letter with Apple Yost and ZLLP, a special counselor for special education hires, and I know those are, like, the long line, and that will be for them, so they're following him.
But we still have pop?
We still have pop. Is it just because they're specializing?
Yeah, it's good.
That's just simply an engagement letter that I. There are some discussion items. So the first one is the budget stash report that Jason sent off later in the week. Jason, I guess. We're going to go through the update for. We're gonna go through the update for.
Yeah, so let's start with the budget status report I'm actually gonna hand out. One other item that I had talked about last time, trying to do a quick summary of reduced expenditures and lost revenues due to COVID. So I did a brief summary of what that looks like. So I do want to go over this as I'm going over the budget status report. Apologize for not hitting this out earlier, but fairly self-explanatory. So with the budget status report, I'll start with that for June 30. These are obviously not audit numbers. We have our auditors coming in in two weeks gearing up for that. But I did want to give you kind of where we're at with most of our accounts payable already and some of our revenue pools already done as well. So I'll start with the revenues. And if you recall from previous months, we were looking to be approximately $300,000 less than what we had budgeted. You'll see that's actually looking a little bit better here with what I'm presenting this evening. Our EIT revenues, which we had anticipated a fairly substantial decrease in the months of June, July, and August, actually came in very strong through July and August. They bounced back pretty strongly. Our August payments actually higher than last year's August payment. So I was originally anticipating a loss in EIT revenue or at least being under budget with EIT revenue. And it looks like we're actually going to be that budget even with employment increase and whatnot that would have occurred here in marketing with unemployment. So EITs are really strong compared to what we would have thought. So that's really the biggest change with revenues. There were some other ins and outs, but again, EIT is really the main driver of that. But still, we're looking to be about $180,000 less than what we had originally budgeted for revenues. Expenditures, and then I'll mainly look at the total here on this report. About $350,000 less than what we had budgeted, so we're under budget by 350. But I'll get to a little bit more detail of that with the COVID report that I just passed out. In total then, we're right about a million dollar operating loss for the year. As you recall, we do have about $253,000 that's coming in from bond money. It's actually reimbursing us the costs for last year, but that will show up as revenue in the current. So our net bottom line for this year is about $786,000, which still is substantially below the 1.2 million that that was. So while we were pretty concerned about what this might look like about four months ago, at least through June 30, I can say things have leveled off and it's looked a little bit better than what I had originally expected. That that we made. So if you look at the item that I just handed out, I'll go over some of this. This certainly is an all-inclusive list that I do think it hits pretty much all of the high level items. So the first item you'll see there is the expenditures. And I tried to detail out what that was. So overall substitutes, let's see, the negative hundred. So we spent about $100,000 less this year than what we had budgeted for substitutes. Again, we weren't in school for about a quarter of the year, so that's obviously the driver of that. Homebound cost was slightly less than $5,000. Overall supplies cost was about $30,000 less. The biggest driver there was just paper in terms of cotton paper and things like that. That was the main driver of supply reduction. Conference registrations, obviously nobody was going to any conferences. Anything was done unfortunately, but we really didn't do a lot of conferences here the last four or five months. So savings of about $40,000. Energy costs, about $60,000. Now, I'll just preface that and say, you know, it's hard when you look at the overall year and say, okay, how much of that was caused by the closures for four months versus having relatively mild winter compared to some other winters? So certainly both of those things play into that. But I would say approximately $60,000 was mainly due to closure for. Transportation for field trips, we have a lot of field trips in the spring that we obviously had to cancel when we were not going. So about $25,000 in savings there. And then several different items with athletics, the athletic trainer, that we didn't have a fourth quarter payment for. That was rare, $22,000. Game help, about 15, officials 15, and then athletic transportation, about $23,000. So in total, there were about $335,000 of used expenditures that we didn't have this last year. There were some additional costs, meaning with some technology and software and things like that as we were going remote and going online, getting hotspots and things like that. There's additional costs, about $25,000 through June 30. That's certainly a lot more since June 30, and I'll get into that here a little bit as well. So in total, we're talking about a $310,000 reduction. That's about a 26.1% of our total expenditures for the year. So when you look at that $310,000, if you go back to the budget status report, we were under budget by 351,000. The vast majority of that 351,000 was because of COVID savings, not any spending. So with the budget status report, we were very, very, very close to basically spending all of our expenditures that we did approach. Looking at revenue then, we had some lost revenue. EIT gave about $170,000 in total. Real estate transfer taxes, about $30,000. Interest, about $50,000. And additions to athletic events, about $4,000. So approximately $250,000 of lost revenue because of the closure as well. So that next to a reduction in our deficit of about $56,000, which is not much when you're talking about a $50 million budget. So I know there was a lot of talk originally that school districts are saving a lot of money because of closure. And I tried to, at least for Northern, we put some numbers as to what that actually represented. And when you net our losses of revenues with our loss of expenditures, we're really talking of a reduction of about $55,000. So certainly a reduction, but we're near hundreds of thousands or even millions of dollars like some may have. So any questions with the budget status report or search costs saving? Cost differences doesn't work. With that, then I'll just jump down to item B, the CARES grants. And I had spoken about this last month and wanted to just give a little bit of guidance on this before. So we actually currently have two different pots of money that the CARES Act has provided. One is really more state-driven. It is federal money, but it's flowing through the state. And that's the safety grant for this year. And in total, we were allocated just over $340,000. As of right now, 240 of that 340 is open for us to use. Mr. Labuda and I and McAllen put together our plan for that. We had to submit that to the state, which was done several weeks ago or over a month ago. So currently, COVID costs that we have are getting coded to that grant. So that money can be used for costs that come from March 13th when we close up until October 31st. That grant window will end October 31st. Other $100,000 that's in that safety grant, at this point, we know we are going to be getting that money. But there's really not a lot of details of when that grant window opens and if there's going to be another application process that we have to go through. So there's not a lot of guidance on that, that other third really of that money. But that is something we expect to get from this current school year. The other piece then is the ESSER money that flowed through the federal government to us. And the allocation was based kind of off of the type of one allocation that we get. That total was about $258,000. And we haven't spent any of that. There's some confusion in terms of the non-public portion of that money and how much of that money actually would then have to go to non-public schools. So at this point, we're cracking a plan as to what percentage may actually go to the non-publics. And then we will eventually start to spend some of that money. Waiting a little bit on guidance and also on that calculation. So we haven't touched any of that ESSER money yet. So in total, we're just shy of $600,000 that we have been told that we'll be getting from the CARES money from the rebate package that the federal government picked up. Of that 240,000, as of today, we spent about $101,000 in total, actually spent it. We know there's a significant chunk that we've encountered and we're waiting for those invoices and waiting for those supplies and waiting for those computers as Mr. Beal has talked about earlier. So we'll easily spend this 240 free October 31st. Another item that Captain talked about this morning really is just those increased costs for the students that are going to be within the NOLA program now. And the cost not only of the software, but the teachers that are going to be doing that. So we definitely want to use some of this money that we're going to be getting through ESSER and potentially through the second phase of the safety grant, try and cover some of those costs. It's not going to be enough to cover all of it right now, but hopefully we will cover at least 50% of those costs. So that's what we said now. Certainly, there's a lot out there about a second CARES package or a second stimulus package. You know, I'm speculating on any of that. I'll just give you the numbers that I know, and that's what we said. Questions on there?
So what you're getting from the state as far as COVID?
Yes, yes. Yeah, all the federal restrictions on this money apply, but it's proposed to their grant. And it's basically the same. It's basically the same. There will be access, yes.
And using percenters benefits if you need it for.
We're good, yeah.
Okay, letter C is discuss making the late penalty for real estate taxes through the summer 21st, 2020.
Yeah, so just something I thought needed to be brought to the board's attention. I'm not sure how many of you have seen this in the papers or not. But the governor actually signed some legislation into law on July 23rd, so it wasn't even a month ago now, that gives the board or directors of school districts the option to either extend the time period that qualifies for a discount for real estate taxes or waive the penalty for failure to make a timely payment for taxes. So there was two different bills that were going back and forth between the House and the Senate. The House was more of a you must do this. The Senate was more of you may do this, it would be the option to do it. What eventually came out and what was signed is the may option, you have the option to do it or not do it. Unfortunately, the timing of all of that was horrible. This was signed July 23rd, our bills are dated July 15th. So our bills are already out, we're already receiving payments on these. So the discount period really isn't affected. But certainly, if you want to do something with a penalty period, it would be an administrative hardship to do. It's not saying we cannot do it. In order to do it, the board would have to pass a resolution saying that they're going to be waiving the penalty. And then we would have to notify our tax collectors that that's what we're choosing to do. At this point, I think we're too late in the game to do that. But I did want to bring it to the board's attention that it is something still that the board can work to do if they're sure. They're sure to do so. So kind of more of a discussion, it's not my recommendation, but something I definitely want to make sure the board.
Letter D on the 15th.
Yes.
So if you, let's just say you did this, you sent it in before you gave it back to your parents. That forces you to take a bridge loan or take some sort of, you know, very long cash flow again?
No, no.
So financially? So about power wise? What happens if you have to go in there and make this happen?
Well, at this point, honestly, the qualitative discount period, it'd be very difficult to get that done. Our voting means until next week, so it'd be very difficult to get that done. I think if we were to do something, we'd be waiving the penalty and allowing people to just pay the face amount. You know, we got to send a resolution to our tax collectors, let them know. Potentially, there'd be a lot of back and forth between taxpayers and tax collectors in the school district in terms of people sending you checks that have the penalty. You have to re-issue that check back, avoid it, absent the paid face amount. And certainly, we wouldn't advertise that we're doing this, put it in the banner, you know, do whatever we could to get that out there. But there's going to be a lot of back and forth and a lot of mistakes. I guess you can say people paying the wrong amount. So again, I'm not saying it can't be done, but it's going to cause a lot of work on the tax collector side. A lot of extra.
Probably something that should have been considered in May or June after those two weeks before. When it's going to do, yes.
Like I said, this was signed July 23rd. That's over a week after our little RVP, you know, and tax bill.
What are you talking about as far as, I think right now, we're just talking about. What would that, what is that? Just an out.
Last year, I just looked at it, last year was about $50,000 in total. There's a number I need to say someone had a ballpark $3,000 tax. 10%, 10%.
Could you just repeat that, Patricia? They won't hear that.
Except for the people who are out of work, I think it's a good thing to do.
I don't disagree. I would dramatically argue this should have been done two months ago. The tax bill, the out, people are paying them. Again, I'm not saying it can't be done. It's administrative. Dramatically difficult.
My recommendation is to just stay. Anyone disagree with that?
I'm saying pass point, I agree with me and those things to do with people are having difficult times right now. These were worse.
A lot of folks are making more money setting home. I'm having a time here. Setting home. That a lot to everyone, I'm sure there are folks who have a stroke.
So Kevin is on the call, but he does not have any audio, which is good since he doesn't have any agenda items. But he is listening.
Hello, Gavin. Our new policy. I do have one, I have to, I don't know who else is involved with this whole right part thing, with the trip and the cancellation and getting refunds and stuff. But our check has bounced twice now from right on. And so we're going to try a third time, but this is a mess. And I'm sure we're not the only family that's dealing with this. So unless they can step onto the table and do something to add to the district in the future, I would say if there's other reputable organizations that run things like what we signed up for, I would rather go with somebody else that's going to stand behind what they, something they're going to do. That's just from my own personal experience and how many other people.
I completely agree.
Run into the same.
I would never recommend Bright Spark to any organization whatsoever. I personally don't have problems with much of us still going. But for the parents who are supposed to be having checks given back and credit card refunds, it's ridiculous. If you have two people going, it's 30, about $3,000 that people or parents are sitting on.
Yeah, so we, yeah, we have been aware of it since June when it first started. We have been in conversations with Bob Frank Hauser. I was in communication with parents, Laura, Mrs. Allen, Mr. McCartney. We did talk with. We did, uh, we did talk with our solicitor over what we may do due to the Chapter 11 filing. There was certainly the, the, the delay in the checks being bounced because of that filing. We do anticipate by the end of this week, we'll be sending a letter from the district, um, written, uh, with consult with our solicitor. But right now, our, our options are, are very limited, and our, our hope is that they honor the, the reimbursements, um, that are due to these families. That's part one of this. Unfortunately, I don't think it's the end of the story, because there are concerns about those that still have money, that have not backed out of the trip, that are planning on going on a trip in April of 2021. And we have questions about how that will be handled, because there's a, a pre-filing group, and then there's a post-filing group, and they will not be treated the same, uh, and, uh, we don't know how that will play out. So, um, our solicitor's aware and, uh, working on it, and we'll, we'll be pushing something out. We had initially hoped at the next Booster Club meeting to have a statement to, to read, but we're feeling the need to send a letter out just saying, this is at least where we are as a district. I've been engaged with conversations with their rep. They were just as surprised when the Chapter 11 filing had taken place, it was the parent company that actually did the filing, and then all the subsidiary companies filed, uh, and that was what led to the bounced checks and, and returned checks. So, uh, the administration's been, been aware of it, we've been working on it. The hope was that people were going to get their money the first, um, those that had trip insurance, they get their full refund. Now we're at a state of, of, uh, four installments of refunds for those that backed out of the trip. The first installment, the checks bounced, uh, earlier this month, or actually earlier in July. I was told that, and I don't know Greg, where yours were, but I was told that, and I had families confirm with me that their second attempt at cashing their check, that it did clear. But I don't know where, where everyone stands at, and that's been one of the frustrations with them is the customer is the parent, and we're not the customer as the district, so they're not giving us information as to where people are and how many people we're talking about, but, uh, we have tried to do what we can do on the district side to, to nudge, nudge this process along.
It's not in the district, I mean, there are a lot of travel companies that are out of business, there are bus companies out of business, cruise companies out of business. I mean, this pandemic has destroyed them, so, I mean, we're just a victim of circumstance. But if there are other companies that are stronger financially. Ask about future ones. Right, and policy meetings, Mr. Shaker?
Uh, yes, we have two policies considered in approval, uh, policy 103 and 104.
Just to be sure we can.
Sexual harassment against students and sexual harassment against staff.
Thank you, Mr. Shaker. Yeah, so, um, the two policies for you for the first read, um, this month, they stem from a change the U.S. Department of Education and the Office for Civil Rights amended the Title IX reg at the end of May of 2020. So the changes reflected in 103 and 104 come from that, those amendments. To highlight some of them, definitions have been updated, definitions of what a claimant is, what a respondent is, of what Title IX harassment is. So, so the definitions have been updated, um, in the policies. It also asks that we specifically name who the Title IX coordinator is, along with email, um, work address, and work phone. So there's some specificity now, um, in the policy. It also asks that we list the duties of the Title IX coordinator. So, uh, some of those things are in there. It also, um, asks that, um, we include a statement in our student handbooks, in our code of conduct, posted on our website that clearly, um, explains our, our stance and the process and how things work should there be a, should there be a complaint. See if there's anything else within the policy that has, um, needed to be mentioned. I think the other main thing is, um, this policy not only is for Title IX, but it's still an umbrella policy for ADA, 504, and, and I, I D E A, and other discrimination laws. And so it's, it's, it's written in a more general stance, so it can apply to all, but now there are a, a ton of attachments that contain specificity. So you'll see a lot of strike throughs on our old policy, and that language hasn't been deleted, it's just been now moved to an attachment. And so the attachments are now the specific language, and the policy is a little more general in terms of the process. So I think that's the other, um, the other main change. Mr. Patrick has agreed, uh, to be our Title IX coordinator, so we can actually.
That was my question.
It was, it was Mrs. Unty, she was a compliance officer last year, and, um, that has changed in the policy to Mr. Patrick for a few reasons, but, yeah.
Right, one of the main reasons is because, uh, there, there may be in, in, um, occasions where Benji has to be the investigator, it's a staff issue, staff-related. And the investigator cannot be the Title IX coordinator, so that's a distinction that they made very clear in the new, uh, new law. So that's one reason is that. And I would say that it's just a much more rigorous process in terms of the filing the complaint, and then the complaint being investigated. They, they walk you through, uh, as Pat said, it is attachment to the pages long, uh, and how to go through the investigation, but that's what we're, that's what we're looking at.
What, and, and I hate to say this, but what if you're the issue? Is there a backup?
Yeah, I mean, in an exceptional case like that, um, somebody else would step in.
Okay.
Another, uh, district administrator.
So you have a lot of.
The board would be the decision maker, because they also define who's going to be the decision maker in each case.
Okay.
It does speak to if the Billy principle is, then this is what happens, but that's a good question. That, for that, so.
A pleasure, I'm happy to.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Good question, that's a very good question. So, uh, first read, uh, this month, it's rough draft, I understand that, I'm trying to get, um, there's a dead line you need to read, so, it will be cleaned up and, and ready to go. If you have any questions on it, obviously between now and next one, please, uh, reach out to Pat or for myself.
Thank you for all that, all right. I believe we're going to end our regular session, we will break into executive session. So thank you all for joining us online, and, uh, we'll see you, uh, next week.
That will conclude our committee meeting. Uh, we will move, be moving into executive session. Executive session, uh, no items will be taken, it is, uh, for us to discuss personnel matters, uh, and legal matters before the board. Uh, next meeting will be, uh, next Tuesday night, uh, 7:00 PM, it'll also be virtual, and we'll post it then. Thanks, Mr. Labuda, for recording.
Recording is now stopped.